I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
All right, let's go ahead and get this meeting started. This is an historic first for us. Usually we're starting 10, 15 minutes late because we go along on pre-agenda. Tonight, we're actually watching the clock to see when 5:30 hits. But we are dying to know where you partiers are from back up here in the back left of the room.
Dr. Phillips.
Where? Dr. Phillips, okay. We want to party with y'all next St. Patrick's Day. You're a fun group. All right, well, welcome to the Orange County School Board in our meeting tonight. Tonight, we have invited two individuals to join us who everybody at this board table and most of the professionals in this room will certainly recognize, and they are two individuals we're extremely, extremely proud of. Our 2014 Support Person of the Year and the OCPS 2015 Teacher of the Year. Could we have Dolores Patterson and Kristin Einuzi please come to the podium and lead us in a moment of silence? Kristin, did I say your name, last name correctly? I couldn't remember from the ceremony.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, all right.
Good evening. Will everybody please stand for a moment of silence? And we'll remain standing when Kristin will lead us in our pledge.
And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Well, thank you, ladies. If you could stand up there for a minute, we're going to brag on you all for a moment. We're so proud to have both of you with us this evening. I'm going to start my bragging with our 2014 Support Person of the Year, Dolores Patterson, from the Dr. Phillips 9th Grade Center, only because this is a very, very exciting week for her. Not only is she the Orange County Support Person of the Year, but she was announced as one of only five finalists out of 67 in the entire state of Florida to be named a finalist for Support Person of the Year. And I say it's an exciting week for Ms. Patterson because we are going to find out at the end of this week whether she is named the Support Person of the Year for the state of Florida, but I want you to know on behalf of the board administration, regardless of whether you win or not, we are just so peach punk punch punch punchy proud. I'm trying to come up with my words here. Help me out here with my metaphor, but we are just so very proud of you and how you are representing Orange County Public Schools. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Her colleagues, who have shown up en masse tonight to support Dolores, which I think speaks volumes that they've shown up like this, say that Dolores stands for, and boy, this is creative, for Dr. Phillips. And the D in her name stands for Dr. Phillips, the E for efficient, the L for loving, the O for original, the R for responsible, the I for intelligent, the S for sincere, and whoever came up with that is extremely creative. She goes the extra mile to form a bond among administrators, faculty, and staff by encouraging a team atmosphere. And I think that we were all on the board inspired by your video this year, Dolores. In fact, frankly, we don't know who's going to win before the end of that, but I leaned across to the superintendent that night and I said, "I have a funny feeling Ms. Patterson is going to win." So I'm very, very glad that our prophecy came true that night.
Thank you.
We also certainly will not forget our newly awarded 2015 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kristin Einuzi. She is a language arts teacher at West Orange High School, and boy, I have a feeling this makes you unique, not only in OCPS, not only in the state of Florida, but probably nationally. She is the only female head wrestling coach in Florida, and not only is she the head wrestling coach, but she is a very good one because she has led West Orange to a district championship in that sport. That's somebody to be proud of. Not only is Ms. Einuzi a very strong coach, but she also produces exceptional results in the classroom. Her students know when they walk into her classroom that they are going to be inspired and motivated, and I have a feeling you probably don't have any problem maintaining discipline in that classroom as well, Ms. Einuzi.
Not at all.
We are so very, very proud of you as our Teacher of the Year this year, and I know that each board member would like to shake your hands once again. And Dolores, I got a big old hug from you that night, a Support Person of the Year. I can't hug you across the podium, but congratulations to the both of you. We are so very, very proud of your representation of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. She's going to jump across the table and hug her.
Dolores.
I forgot your certificates. Can you give this Kristin?
Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, well, I'm just taking a point of personal privilege because Pam Gould is not here, and Dr. Phillips has always been special in my life. Because when they first built the school, you know, you welcome us with career education back in the days, and you were one of our top career ed schools. Ms. Patterson has always been there, you all know that. She has welcomed all of us, she sees to it when you do your annual, you know, all of us come back, some kind of way she gets all of us back, and that is some star-studded affair. But above all, I just want to thank you so much for the way you welcome the students that when you gave them a choice and you allowed them to come over to Dr. Phillips, you welcome all of the students out of my district that wanted to come, and you made sure that they made it to the top. And another thing, on behalf of Mr. Rosen, we thank you for allowing our Tangelo Park students to remain and not be able to separate. And you know that that's one of that Ms. Reed and the administration provides for those students, and you've opened the door for them. She has always been there. So I'm here to let you know that you have a winner. I know that we're going to win the top, and DP, you just go forward. And, all righty, so just thank you all for that. And I'm going to piggyback on the chair with Ms. Chris. Where's Ms. Chris? Where did she go? Just stand up. Okay, anybody want to take her on? You may be seated. She's a winner. Thank you so much. Let's give them all a round of applause. That is so wonderful.
You know, notwithstanding all the comments about her toughness, I bet she still cries at romantic comedies. Well, congratulations to both of you all. Tonight, board members on our consent agenda, we also have a number of special recognitions. April is Autism Awareness Month, and we are recognizing that. Orange County Public Schools serves approximately 2,000 students along the autism spectrum of disorders. Our district has an array of educational supports, including physical, occupational, speech or language therapy, and behavioral assistance. And I'd like to invite everyone in the room from our exceptional Student Education Department tonight to please stand, along with any parents of any autistic children that we may have with us tonight. Could you please stand and allow us to recognize you? Anybody here for me? You know, as a personal aside, I want to share with you all how proud I am of the work that all public schools in this country do. In ESC, I was having a conversation with somebody the other day who was from France, and they were talking about their efforts to establish a school over in France for autistic children. And in many European countries and Asian countries, special needs children, their needs are simply not met. And one of the things that is great about American public education, I think is lost in a lot of the noise and the debate that we hear, is that in America, we educate every child regardless of their exceptionality, and it makes America a very, very special place because many of the parents, thanks to y'all's hard work, will share with us over and over again that if it weren't for the public schools, their students would not be able to get the services that their children so desperately need. So thank you for your very, very hard work on behalf of all of our children. It's also Building Safety Month this month. We are joining the state of Florida in recognizing May 2014 as Building Safety Month. And could I have everyone from a little appreciated and hardworking department, the Building Code Compliance Office, and our Fire, Safety, and Health Department to please stand and recognize you as well? I know the chief's here. I want to thank you all for doing all you can to make our facilities safe and our children safe during the school day. I think in a lot of ways, being a BCCO officer is one of the hardest jobs because nobody ever wants to be inspected and never want to see the inspectors show up, but it's an essential role and it is a life safety issue. And Chief Charles, thank you so much for all that your department does as well for making sure that our children are safe each and every day. It's also a very, very special week that we're recognizing in May, May 5th to 9th as Teacher Appreciation Week, and this board so deeply appreciates all of our classroom teachers. We are a finalist this year, frankly, in my book, three years ahead of when I expected us to become a finalist for the Broad Prize, and that is entirely due to the support of our entire team, but especially due to the support of our classroom teachers. So can I have any classroom teachers with us this evening? Please stand and allow us to recognize you as well. Thank you very, very much for all you do for us. So we're going to go right into our meeting tonight. We do not have a strategic plan update, and I don't believe we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize Dr. Jenkins. So what I'm going to do, I think, is I'm going to pause for a moment because it is FCAT week, glitches and all, from the computer system. So let me pause, so if you all would like to head home and get back to your families you can at this time. Okay, board members, as I mentioned, we do not have a strategic plan update tonight, and we don't have any newly appointed administrators to recognize. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements, and then we'll go into any agenda changes. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by filling out a yellow card. It looks like this. I've got a couple of them up here already. You can get these cards from Ms. McGill, who is the lady sitting at the far left-hand side of the dais. When that issue comes up on our agenda, I will call for you to speak. You will have three minutes to address the board. There is a timer there, and then after you are done addressing the board, the board may have some questions of you. If you have scheduling constraints, please try to let us know, although we do not believe this meeting tonight will take all that long. I want to announce as a preliminary matter, we don't take roll call at these meetings, but we are missing one board member tonight due to a family emergency, a health emergency. So if you're wondering where Ms. Gould is, she had an emergency that she had to attend to back at her home. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
We do, Chairman. Let me go through a list for you. Item 1403 is moved to item 1601. It includes additions, the resolution and PDF file. It's the mediation settlement agreement regarding West Orange Relief Site. Were both added after the release of the board book. And then adding item 1409, request approval of settlement in the case of Jones versus OCSB. The resolution was added after the release of the board book. Item 1602 is being added as an emergency item, which I shared with you. It's a request approval for the 2013-14 contract salary increases, benefits, and language changes for instructional personnel, pending ratification or by imposition. Item 1702 is an information-only school mitigation agreement. The signed CEA was attached after the release of the board book, and the same is true of 1703.
All right, so just so I'm clear, Dr. Jenkins, forgive me, I lost my place there. 1601 is now going to be, what was 1403, correct? 1602 is going to be the emergency resolution on the CBA?
That is correct.
And did we have a 1603, or was that it?
That was it.
Okay. Oh, that's what it was. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. And then I am going to pull, in the matter of GW, off the consent agenda and put it on the non-consent agenda. And just so the family understands why we do that, it's because we want to get it off consent to have a full discussion of the issue, and that will be 16.03. All right, I find cause to amend the agenda as suggested by the superintendent and the chair. Can I have a motion to do so?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Roach, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended as suggested. We do not have any public hearings? Oh, I'm sorry, we do. My bad, my bad, we do. All right, 3.01, modifications of our student progression plan. Dr. Jenkins, will this be handled by legal or by you?
It's by me. We have had a work session on this particular item. Any questions posed by the board members were addressed. We certainly have Mary Bridges here to answer any additional questions that there might be on the part of the board.
Okay, board members, questions? Comments? Board members, do you need a further explanation of the changes we've had? Just so the members of the audience know, we've already had, when we take up a matter here on a board policy change, and by that time, we will have had two public hearings on it before it comes before us, which is why there's typically very few questions or no questions from the board. Seeing none? All right, can I entertain a motion to approve the modifications to board policy IA? It's been moved by Mrs. Robinson. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Cadel. Just so it's clear on the record, the motion is to approve modifications to board policy IA, instructional goals and learning objectives, also known as a student progression plan. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. All right, we are now on the consent agenda. Board members, do we have any questions on a consent agenda? And again, for both speakers that have signed up to speak tonight, we've moved both those items off consent on 16, so I'll recognize you when they come up on non-consent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Chair, I think Ms. Gould has just joined us. I just want to get confirmation. Ms. Gould, can you hear us?
Ms. Gould, are you with us?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you for calling in.
I am here.
And we hope your mother's doing all...
My apologies for not being there.
And Ms. Gould, we moved the resolution, just so you know, to item 16.01, so we'll be to that in a moment.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, board members, any questions on the consent agenda? Okay. Can I have a motion?
Move the consent?
Okay.
With the necessary corrections?
All right. Vice Chair Gordon has moved the adoption of the consent agenda with the necessary changes. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that adopted unanimously. All right, we are now on item 16.01. Mr. Rodriguez, will you be handling? Okay. Do you want to give an explanation of it first before I go to her?
Board, Mr. Chair, board members, item 16.01 is the resolution and the settlement agreement that we had reached at the mediated settlement agreement, at the mediation pursuant to Chapter 164, which provides that when two governmental entities are in a dispute, they will go through a joint dispute resolution process. As you're all aware by now, the county commission has rejected by a 4-3 vote this morning or this afternoon, that settlement agreement. It was a settlement agreement, however, that was entered in good faith by both parties. Elected officials were there, representatives of elected officials were there. The chairman served as your representative, Commissioner Scott Boyd, whose district is in, was there on behalf of the county commission. In addition, staff had had numerous conversations between the two sides in trying to fine-tune what were some of the concerns that we had heard. Ms. Gould had had a committee meeting or a community meeting since the lawsuit was initiated, and we took some of those thoughts, and obviously, the cost of implementing some of the changes were prohibitive. Other changes were just not tenable because, for example, the removal of retention pond, that's not something we could comport with. At the end of the day, I think both sides believed it to be a good resolution. No one was really completely satisfied that we would be moving the stadium off-site from our side, but we realized that that would be a concession, as well as the additional close to $2 million that would be invested in some of the Sun Ridge-style architectural plus additional landscaping for about another million. So with that being said, despite the actions of the county commission, you still have this as an item for your consideration. And I will just share with you that obviously, if because of their actions today, your previous direction was that we would pursue the lawsuit in earnest, and we will be doing that tomorrow. I'll give you, I guess, more of an impact on that during my report, but for this item and this item only, what you have before you is just the settlement agreement as it was drafted and carefully worded between the two parties, and make sure it represented the viewpoints of both bodies.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. All right, I'm going to begin by going to Ms. Gould. Ms. Gould?
Thank you, and again, my apologies for not being there. Of course, I planned to be there, but my mom had a medical one. I'm sitting in the ER right now with her. You know, I have always been in favor of pursuing all paths, but I do want to share some thoughts that I have with the board about today's county decision.
Ms. Gould?
Uh-huh.
Ms. Gould, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
I apologize for this, but we have a speaker, and typically, we go to the speakers before the board weighs in. So will you allow me to interrupt you and recognize our speaker first?
Absolutely.
Is that okay? Okay, thank you, Ms. Gould. All right, we do have one speaker this evening, Mr. Ricardo Cumberbatch. Mr. Cumberbatch, I'm sorry, it slipped my mind. Welcome, sir. Ms. Gould, welcome. Thank you, Ms. Gould.
My pleasure. My name is Ricardo Cumberbatch. I reside at 5710 Oxfordmore Boulevard in Windermere, Florida. I do live in the West Windermere Rule Settlement. In light of the BCC decision this afternoon not to move forward with the agreement reaching mediation, I come here tonight to ask each of you to no longer spend any more time or taxpayers' dollars pursuing this matter in court. I believe that it's time to heal and work together in our community. I think it's time to look at the north of Albert's property and possibly bring back tiny roadside to life. I have said from the beginning that the residents of the Rule Settlement are here to help. We need a high school in Horizon West, and we, as residents, will provide any assistance that you need to make this happen. We have made inroads with developers who not only demonstrated interest in the BET property, but ultimately supplied a LOI to the school board for $11.3 million this past Friday. The sale of this land and development of compatible housing will go a long way in healing the community. It would also bring needed funds to purchase the NOA property or any other additional property that may come up. As I stated this morning at the BCC, there are three items that I ask you to do today as I asked them this morning. Uphold the oath that you took when you took office. Support, protect, and defend the Constitution and the government of the United States and the state of Florida. Show your continued leadership that you've done throughout this whole process, and vote no on this proposal, settlement agreement, and move forward on the NOA site or any other additional sites. We're here to help, we're not here to hinder. We understand we need schools in our community. Kids need education, we all know that. We strongly believe that this school should be in Horizon West, and we really don't want to spend any more time fighting. I heard Mr. Rodriguez say they're going to file tomorrow to go to court. Hopefully, you guys will make some decisions tonight and not to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cumberbatch. All right, Ms. Gould, again, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the floor is yours.
No problem. Okay, and I appreciate Mr. Cumberbatch's remarks as well. He is one of the people who has put in a lot of time even before I got onto this board, into this issue, and appreciate his dedication to not only his community, but his leadership and his group, as well as Ms. Gould. But I do want to, I'm going to actually read some comments that I wrote in case I couldn't be there, because I don't want to miss anything that I had written down. And as you know, I've always supported looking at multiple paths, but the 2017 deadline is looming before us, and I have great concern about our students and our community having the assets it truly needs in the timely manner in which it needs it. I have been in office for 15 months, and this issue has been the focal point of the bulk of my time within the community. I have concentrated on gathering as much input as possible to ensure everyone in our community was part of the process, and all options were explored. I personally hosted or was part of at least five community notice meetings, plus many more individual meetings with the constituents and/or constituent groups. I, along with Commissioner Boyd, have had a collaborative approach to bringing parents, neighborhoods, developers, OCPS and county staff, and local business to the table to create open dialogue. We have worked diligently so that we can give this issue as much exposure as possible. We have committed, we have been committed to taking into consideration the point of view of all residents and seeking the solution that is in the best interest of educating our community's children. Secondly, to be at this juncture and be denied the opportunity to follow through on the time and effort that the community as a whole has put in, as well as the mediation process invested in reaching common understanding and a settlement agreement for consideration over the next few months, a deep-ended exception has been distressing and disappointing to me. Not seeing that process through is really the greatest disappointment of that. After our joint meeting with the BCC, my belief was that our two bodies had turned a page toward cooperation and full vetting of options. Today's commission no vote seems premature. It is still my hope that the county commission will consider their decision and have an open heart and an open mind to see the process through. Denying the settlement before all the review and evaluation steps could be fully performed just feels a little disingenuous to me. It is for these reasons I would hope that the board will approve the recommended settlement, which I believe in my heart that we entered into in good faith. I think by going forward and continuing to review this and leave this open... I think by going forward and continuing to review this and leave this open, provides us the opportunity to have all possibilities available so that we can have our school by 2017. Thank you for allowing me to call in this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Ms. Moore.
Likewise, I was stunned and disappointed today, and I, and demonstrated a couple of questions, because it really just caught me completely off-guard. I just did not expect this type of reaction. And so there were, one comment that Ms. Gould made, Mr. Rodriguez, and then the other is, I, I'm just a little bit confused as to, I know the process that this board followed, that we bargained in good faith, that we had a noticed executive session to have this discussion and to give parameters so that as a body, we would be in agreement. So I'm, I'm a little bit perplexed as to, you know, what transpired on the other side, because I would have been there today, I just assumed both bodies were gonna honor the, the settlement agreement that we negotiated in good faith. So that's the first question as to the process that the county commission followed, if you have any idea. And then, second, Mrs. Gould mentioned something, saying it was premature, and so maybe you could enlighten me a little bit on the next steps or stops on the county commission side of the, the House here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, I, I can't answer the first question, because, I mean, the only thing I know for sure is that they did not have an executive session of any kind. That, that is a, a function of Florida statutes that allows a board, such as yours, a governing body, to be able to make difficult decisions about litigation, pending litigation, and discuss possible settlement options. To my knowledge, that did not take place in any way, shape, or form on the county commission side. And keep in mind, you know, for members of the audience that are here, there are transcripts of those sessions, and, you know, obviously, it's not that you're meeting outside in the, in the dark, and, you know, at some point, that does become a public record, but not during the course of litigation. You should be allowed to discuss freely what the pros and cons of your case are. I'm not gonna be critical of, of Mr. Newton as the county attorney, because I think he's a fine county attorney, and I've worked with him and underneath him at some point when I was over at the county attorney's office, but my sense is, is that that discussion with their board members did not take place. For whatever reason, that didn't take place. As regards your second question, I think Ms. Gould is referring to the fact that she was hopeful that it was a premature decision, because the vote tonight, or the vote this afternoon, was not to essentially say, I mean, the county commission's decision was to never allow this to happen, or at least this application is being stopped for a second time. However, I think Ms. Gould and the rest of us were hopeful that they would give this application, this renewed application, refreshed application, a second glance, a second review. And ultimately, a court of competent jurisdiction may tell them, they may go have to go back and review our first application, which won't have the stadium off-site, which won't have some of the bells and whistles that were negotiated on behalf of the property owner. So whatever capacity it is, they're, they're supposed to be, the intent of this agreement was for the county commission to look at that application in a new light, given that now the architectural features, the aesthetic things that were troubling to some of the neighbors would be re-enhanced, and that the stadium, which seemed to be the crux of the argument for many of the residents out there, would be removed further down the road. That county commission is not gonna have the, the ability to review that application, and I think that's the frustration I think Ms. Gould was, was expressing in her comments.
Ms. Cadel.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure where one of the questions comes, but the first question is, and I think I heard Mrs. Gould refer to it also, this board entered into a, into the negotiations in good faith, and it would be my intent to stand behind and for us to vote in favor of what we worked so hard to compromise. I did not attend in person the meeting, but I watched it on TV, because they broadcast it live, and some of the comments that were made were very hurtful. There are unintended consequences throughout this district when you agree to put in a wall, like we agreed to put into a wall. I'm getting pushed back from a community already, and they expect to have a wall, and they think we've already built the wall. And so there are just all kinds of unintended consequences that come when we start saying, well, this neighborhood or that neighborhood, and, you know, I, I was willing to say, I don't like all of this, but I'm willing to compromise. And so I am disappointed, but I would hope that this board would vote tonight to formally adopt this mediation agreement. It's the first opportunity we've had to do to show the good faith that we worked hard on this, we, we really were bargaining both ways, you know, to come to an agreement, and I have been told numerous times from all kinds of different people, that when you have a mediation and nobody's happy, it's a pretty doggone good mediation, because everybody had to give some. And I think that is the case with this mediation. There is not one of us sitting in this room that is totally happy with the agreement, but we all had to give some. The second question I have, and I brought it up last meeting after the mediation, because when we talked about until we have a resolution of where the children at West Orange High School are going, we, I personally cannot in good conscience keep putting children into a school I have no solution to, that is bursting at the seams. And Mayor Jacobs is the one who first came up with the charter amendment that said you cannot continue to overcrowd schools. And it's been voted on twice. I mean, it's not once, it was renewed a second time. And every person who campaigns for elected office, overcrowded schools, education, whether or not they're the ones who can make that decision, that's what the people at the doors tell them. You know, they tell them they do not want overcrowded schools. You know, they, they want to tell everyone, you know, what they think about public education. And so I need some clarification, because where I'm sitting today, we don't have any resolution. So it would have been my hope tonight that if we had had agreement in good faith, that maybe we could have come up with something on capacity to be able to say, you know, once we're in design, yeah, you can go ahead and start doing what you need to do to do your development. But I'm sitting here tonight going, we don't have an answer, and we, we bargained in good faith. And so, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm not sure if that gets tied into this, if it comes under your report, but I think it's also something this board needs to talk about.
Want to address that, Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I think the question was already posed, and some of the reporters were asking afterwards, and as I explained to them, that is a policy decision of this board. So I think when the time arises for y'all to make those decisions, you're gonna have to deliberate on that topic. And I, as, as a legal issue, I think we've apprised you on, on your options, and be glad to do so again, but I think maybe wait to see when that item becomes ripe, because at this point, that's maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that, there's probably an item that will come before you, in which it's a West Orange parcel, or a parcel that's in the West Orange zone, and you're gonna have to make that difficult decision as to what to do.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. You know, it's interesting, I, I had not really intended to say much tonight, but I, I do want to make one observation that's disappointing to me, and that's really the word that came to mind today, when I found out the decision was disappointment. I'm just extremely disappointed. We've worked extremely hard with our partners on the county commission to try to achieve a resolution of this, and to find that after both sides, frankly, as Ms. Cadel aptly pointed out, gave quite a bit, gave concessions that typically we don't do for a school to, to have it not come to fruition, the settlement is extremely disappointed, disappointing to me. I, I do want to say one thing, though, and, and it's probably in the vein of stating the obvious, but for those opposed to us putting a school there, I think the thing that most disturbs me is, and this is not true of all of them, so I don't want anybody to take this wrong, but there seems to be one camp that's just angry at Orange County Public Schools, and I think that anger goes back years. I don't think it's anger with this particular board, I don't think it's anger with the people who sit on this board. It's almost as if I'm going, you know, it's almost as if the statement is going, being made that I'm going to vote to deny simply because I'm angry at Orange County Public Schools. And I say that because the comments are along the, the line of, why did you wait? Or, I'm not going to reward you for waiting, or I'm not going to give you what you want because you waited to do this. And what's frustrating about that to me is, and I know this whole board knows this, but it's lost on many in the public, that we already have six public schools in rural settlements. And the rural settlement designation is a fairly recent creation, I think about 20 years ago, in, in, in Orange County ordinances. And there's no magic to it. And I think the fact that we seem to be being punished out of anger just at public schools in general, in Orange County Public Schools, I just don't think that's a valid reason for denial, at least not in my mind. The other issue that concerns me is the stated reason for almost all those who would deny this high school in this area is to establish a policy. And I just think that's inappropriate. I mean, you, I don't think it's appropriate to take up an individual application for an exception, for a special exception, which is a route we go through any time we build a school that's not zoned industrial or commercial. So any time we build a school in an area zoned retail, or multifamily, or residential, or agriculture, we have to go through the same process. And to make an example of this one school, because through this example, various parties on the county commission want to set a new policy. What's extremely frustrating about that as well is this board has passed a resolution stating that we will not build again in the future a high school in a rural settlement, even though that was never an issue until Evans back in 2007, a short seven years ago. So that's really all I have to say on it. I, you know, just to reiterate, it is, to me at least, very disappointing. And at the end of the day, as I've reminded every person who's interviewed me about it, our sole purpose as an institution is to build a school in the best location for the families and students it's going to serve. And one of the observations I made to a member of the press today is, much media attention has been given to the cost issues, and I don't blame the press for that, but they seem to be focused on the cost, and on the battle, and on the fight. But at the end of this day, I think I feel very confident speaking for the board when I say, we're motivated by what is the best location for the families and students we're trying to serve. And throughout this journey, over the last year and a half, two years, we have yet to have a alternative parcel brought to us that's a good, central, convenient location for the families and students that this school wants to serve, and that we're trying to relieve the overcrowding of, of students out there in West Orange. And at the end of the day, that's really all it's about. Where can we build a school that's gonna serve those students and get them out of those overcrowded classrooms? Mr. Rodriguez?
I think Ms. Gould wanted to pipe in, I just punched in for her.
Thank you for being my, my fingers there this evening, Mr. Rodriguez. You know, there's a couple of things that I think I would like to remind the, the board and the public about. One is the timetable for the school, and I know that we, we really have no choice but to pursue litigation, because it was made very clear a few meetings ago, that if we are not in process and finalized on particularly the Beck site by September, we would not make the 2017 deadline. If it were any other site, depending on how much prep work needed to be done, it could actually go past that, but they could try to forge forward to hit the 2017. And while that sounds like a long way off, when you start to really think about what it takes to put up a school that has so many different components to it, there is a, you know, a long design period to make sure that it, it all works for the, for the students and works well, and there's a review process, let things go back and forth, and then the actual build takes a, a year, and sometimes a little longer, depending on weather and other things that happen. So that timetable is a lot tighter than we think. And, you know, that certainly was the, the greatest part of the disappointment that I felt today, that I'm not sure that everybody completely is conscious of that timetable. The second thing that, that I wanted to talk about in that kind of coming back around to what Ms. Cadel was saying, is that there are consequences, and there are immense consequences for our students and our families right now. We are approaching the maximum capacity, including the ninth grade center at West Orange High School. We know with the homes that are already scheduled to come out of the ground from past approvals, we will be increasing that student body, and I would anticipate that it would go at the same pace it did this year, which means multiple hundreds, which means additional portables, which means additional challenges with the extracurricular and, and student testing, because there's not enough computer labs, and, and the list could go on and on and on. And we probably should put that list out there of the things that we have to accommodate for. And we do a great job accommodating, and our kids are adaptable and flexible, which is wonderful. And our parents lock arm in arm and support those kids to, to get through, but there becomes a point where it just becomes very, very difficult and, and demotivating, and I don't want to see our students demotivated. Secondly, and one that I'm extremely sensitive to, having my own business, is the economic development impact of this. Ms. Cadel talked about having to delay development. We need the town center of Horizon West. Our, not just West Orange, our county, our central Florida area needs the town center of Horizon West to happen. Stores and businesses relocate there because of the residential drive around that. It's essential to increasing our quality of life, our cost of living, our home values, all of those things that the Horizon West development is driving in our county. It is the largest residential project in the county, and one of the largest in the state and the country. It, it is a huge economic driver, and that will never foreshadow the need of the children, but it is an important component for everyone in this county. And I also feel that we have actually missed some opportunities with, with delaying the movement of this site. We have been in conversations about very exciting things like possible educational programs that take kids from certificate, all the way to PhD opportunities in, in energy science and agricultural science, and, and I've been talking with potential partners. That's all gonna slow down and become sluggish, and, and we may miss opportunities because of it. So those things, I think everybody needs to understand and be cognizant of as well. And that's it for my comments at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Mrs. Gordon, or Ms. Cadel, I'm sorry, Ms. Cadel.
Well, and there was one other thing, and after I said I was done, I, I remembered, because I've talked at length with a very dear friend who doesn't have a dog in the fight, who doesn't really know what's going on, and the only frame of reference she has is either what she reads in the print media, or she hears on the television. And she made a comment to me, and, you know, we talk a lot about the children we serve, and it's the children and families that we serve. And she said, I never hear any talk about the children. That this has all been lost about too much traffic, too many lights, too big, too big of an impact, but there's no talk about the children. And the children are the ones who are losing in this. And so one of the things we've prided ourselves on is that we are the stewards to make sure that our children have good educational facilities. So I just kind of want to bring this back and... So I just kind of want to bring this back, and Ms. Gould's referred to it, Mr. Sublett's referred to it, a lot of us have referred to it, but this is about meeting the needs of rising high school students and having, being able to provide them the kind of educational experience that their parents expect us to deliver.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, Mr. Chairman, my question, I believe, is directed to General Counsel. Okay, thank you, to our General Counsel. I'm just asking, tonight, I know where you're asking for approval of the mediation settlement, right?
That's the agenda item that's on there, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I did hear Ms. Gould, this has always been a major concern of hers, with the timetable, but I'm just, just saying, I mean, we didn't know how the Board of County Commissioners meeting was going to go today, so we really don't know how this meeting is going to go tonight, believe it or not. But what about the timetable if it is rejected? And we are, we did not, where would that put us when we know we need to build? Because we've looked at with our staff, we've all been out there, we look at the growth and the population within that area, we know that there's a need, even though Mr. Kamabat spoke to the Horizon West, he feels that that's where the school belongs. He personally feels that, but based on information that we received, we saw that exactly where we are would be the best spot because of where the students are coming from. So there's a conflict of interest there between Mr. Kamabat's statement and what we have discovered through our staff and our visiting out there. So I'm just saying, if we did, if we did not vote this in and did not receive enough votes tonight for this proposal, where does that put us? And then if we did vote it in, where would that put us with the timeline? I could not understand, Ms. Gould, and I am so sorry, Ms. Gould, that we're having difficulty understanding because you're not on a landline, and it's very hard to hear all of your statements, and we would love to get it in because this is in your district. But however, I would like the General Counsel, Mr. Chairman, to address those two concerns for me, please.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Ms. Gordon, members of the board, so the timeline doesn't, this doesn't impact the timeline one way or the other. Because the reality is, is since the county commission at this point has elected not to have any scheduled hearings, the original timeline, I would have explained to you, would have said, we would have a BZA in May, and then a county commission meeting in June, at which they would have a public input at both of those meetings. The only timeline at this point is, we will, like I said, your prior actions have not changed, there's no vote on what we're going to do. We know the decision is to go forward with the lawsuit, resume the lawsuit, which has already been approved back in November. We will resume that action tomorrow with great haste and ask the court to take some expedited action on it to the best of their abilities. And in the interim, obviously, as the, as the lawsuit develops, we will keep you posted. And if there's other decisions about where this organization needs to invest its dollars to build a high school, I'm sure the superintendent and her staff will keep you apprised.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, General Counsel.
All right. I don't have anybody else queued up to speak. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the mediated settlement agreement that's listed at item 16.01 of the agenda? Ms. Gould, it's your district, would you like to make that motion, or would you defer to somebody else? It's been moved by Ms. Gould, seconded by Ms. Cato and Vice Chair Gordon. So any further discussion or debate on the issue? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted unanimously. All right. Thank you for weighing in and calling in, Ms. Gould, and our prayers are with your mother.
Thank you so much. I am going to get up because the doctor has been waiting on me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We are now on agenda item 16.02, which is the emergency resolution dealing with the, the recently adopted CBA. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. Item 1602 merely states in resolution form what the board did at the impasse hearing, acceptance of the special magistrate's recommendations and the payment of teachers based on those specific indicators that he provided. Increase of 1,475 awarded additional performance pay based on their 2012-13 final summative evaluation score, which has become part of their salary. Instructional personnel with a highly effective score shall be awarded an additional 1,300. Instructional personnel with an effective score will be awarded an additional 1,000. And instructional personnel with a developing score or instructors who are in a category four status will be awarded an additional 500. The resolution also includes the board's decision that the dollars are retroactive and that if we reach May 27th, still awaiting ratification, that at that point, they are imposed. I did speak with Commissioner of Education, we will transmit this to her in the morning, or tonight, actually, and then hopefully have our funds released for our teacher pay raises immediately. We are just adamant that our teachers get that money in their pockets and not have any further delay, and so we've brought this resolution before you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Board members, any questions? Comments?
I would like to move the adoption of the, let's see, approval of the 2013-14 contract salary increases, benefit and language changes for instructional personnel.
By Ms. Cato, seconded by Vice Chair.
Supposed to say pending ratification of the bargaining unit or imposition.
Okay.
Sorry.
Seconded by Mrs. Gordon and Ms. Moore and Ms. Robinson. Ms. Moore, were you going to speak on this issue? Okay. Then I'll pause for a moment to allow you fill out a card.
I apologize for being late. I was at a healthcare conference with your risk management department. When I received a call that said you were going to vote on the contract tonight, despite the fact that there's a step missing, which is to have our teachers ratify it, we're in the process of preparing those documents and getting that ready to do. We have a process all set up. And so to get a call to say that you had moved it to the agenda tonight was quite disconcerting. And so I just fought I-4 traffic to get here to make sure I got here in time to speak on this issue, because I'm not really sure what moved it to the agenda before our process of ratification happens.
Dr. Jenkins, do you, do you want to address that? And then I'll make a, a comment as well.
Certainly. If you will read the actual document, it is only codifying the special magistrate's ruling, which the board approved on Thursday evening. That is the information that is in the resolution. It is to transmit for our teacher pay raises without further delay.
And, and one of the reasons that we felt that we needed to take this step, Ms. Moore, is because there is a pending deadline, as you know, and we need to signal to the Department of Education so we don't forfeit those funds. And I know that's in our mutual interest, but it was not meant at all to disregard the union or its vote at all.
Our teachers work during the day, and so in order for them to be able to review our documents and make sure everything's included in the package, we had bargaining scheduled for Friday, but today it was canceled. So we need time, release time, to have these teachers be able to come together. So our next bargaining date is May 9th. So at that point, we are going to meet, review the documents. On May 12th, we have a rep meeting. We will hand all of the ballots to every rep at our rep meeting on the 12th. We're going to ask that they have time on a Wednesday afternoon to review everything, have signatures to sign ballots at their faculty meetings, at their schools, and assign the reps to bring those ballots back in time to be counted through the Orange County Elections Office. That's our process. We would hope that you would allow us to do the process, which is supposed to be our process, but to get a call from our attorney, who is sending you a letter right now that you are going past our process, I just don't understand it.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you believe all that can be accomplished by May 27th?
The 12th is our meeting. If your principals will allow, since you've said you've been very helpful, allow that Wednesday afternoon for the reps to do a presentation on the contract at their individual schools, give them three days to get the ballots back to CTA by Friday. The only piece is missing is the Orange County Elections Office person was out of the office yesterday. That's the person I have to make sure is available on that day.
Well, let me, let me turn it over to Mrs. Gordon. I, I do want to make one, one statement, and thank you, Ms. Moore. Nothing that we are doing tonight, from my perspective, circumvents Florida law with regard to the ratification process, because frankly, this body does not have the authority to do anything to circumvent that ratification process. Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Rodriguez, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, this is simply sending a statement to DOE that this board has taken action, so they have something in writing of what we have adopted. So in the event that that vote does not get done in time, or in the event that that vote were to fail, we would not forfeit those dollars that we so desperately need for our teachers to get their pay.
That is absolutely correct, and this is not, this does not even mention the ballot. There is no ballot provided here. It does not circumvent, and we've had our legal opinion certainly that differs from theirs.
Mrs. Gordon?
I think you, that's exactly what I was going to add to, Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore, if you could, if you can come back up, please. Thank you. I think you said it well, and the superintendent said it well. And I, I think, as you stated, President Moore, that you need time. We need time also, and you would really put us in a crunch if we did not notify them that, that it's coming, the, the ratification is coming. But we don't know if the ratification is going to fail. We don't know if it's going to pass. If it's passed and we are, we're ahead of the game, every teacher knows exactly what they're going to get, they know what status they're on, they need to make preparation. It is the end of the school year. It would be totally unfair to the union to try to get a teacher up to par, not knowing what professional service contract they're going to be on, if they're on it or not, they don't know what they're going to get, and we're still, I called you back up, give me the respect. Thank you. And, and I feel that you need to give us time. We too only have two board meetings. You're not going to meet until the 12th. Where is that going to put us? Our meeting is the second Tuesday, which you are well aware of, and we've asked you to really work closely with us on this. And we're, we're really trying to, we're not circum, putting you in any kind of situation that is holding you back. I would have hoped from the other night that you all would have gone back quickly and with, with the vote and the way it went, just have everything ready to go. Several teachers called me, and they were very pleased that we, we were standing, trying to get everything to them, not that, we all are very happy because of what we got and what we didn't get, but at least they know they got it coming. If it doesn't ratify, then you really got to go back to the drawing board. If it ratified, we're smooth sailing. But you have got to give us time, out of respect as a board, that the year is ending. We have graduations coming up, we have end of course going on up until the end of the year. Teachers are trying to close out so many different packages, and you know what it's like to vote. I hate when my billing rep comes to me on a Wednesday and tell me that I have to vote. I, I, and I think they need the time from the last board meeting. You may have to call an emergency meeting and not go by, because we may have to do that also, but we don't want to do it under pressure, under people's lives, they've waited all year long, they know what they're going to get if it's ratified, so we're ready to move on. We're not circumstancing you in any form or any fashion, and we just hope that you would really work with us to get this ball rolling. It's just a ballot, and you and I very well know how we do that. And you really don't need the election supervisor. If you chose, if you chose to do that, you have an election committee, you have a process, you can, you can just tell them, we're going to do it the way we have always done it, and, and not go that way. If you feel that way is faster, then go faster. But the biggest thing is that we really need to work with you to get this done, and we're asking you to do so.
Mrs. Gordon, after Miami had a lawsuit filed after their ratification vote, many of the rules have changed. The two-week requirement to notify all teachers having a hard copy at every school, making sure at every location where there is a vote, the signature page matches the number of ballots that come in, so you do not need to redo it, is everything that we are going through, to make sure that it is absolutely correct, because there would be nothing more embarrassing than to have a problem and have to redo it and delay it. That is why we are taking our time to make sure our documents from CTA's proposal, the district proposal, the special magistrate, all match in the language. Because I even heard there were some people here who hadn't seen some of the language from the summary document that was sent to us about ROTC instructors. So all of that information is being put together. Krista has already sent me an email, she found six mistakes already herself in her own document. So when those teachers are released and we're meeting tomorrow, we will go through all those documents to make sure everything's correct. We want to make sure it's correct instead of to do it fast and not do it right.
And I, and I'm sure glad that you will make that happen for us. Thank you so very much, President Moore.
All right. Board members, any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion yet? Okay. All right. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted unanimously. Done with our regular agenda, we're on reports. Mr. Rodriguez?
Board members, I think you already heard my report earlier regarding the West Orange relief property, and we'll keep you apprised as to what develops in, in that scenario in the weeks and months to come. We do have a, a development and a sort of a languishing case. We did get a, an offer, and you may recall the Denson matter. So I will have to figure out a way to schedule another executive session in that particular case in the future, but we were not prepared to put that forward for the rest of you, given all the other considerations we have. So it's early on in the process, but I think there's progress being made. And I just wanted to just take a moment to thank John Palmorini in representing, along with Mr. Gonzalez, the superintendent during the process. You know, he's, he's had a, a difficult load, and we did our, our, you know, our, our job of making sure we could not communicate and so forth, board members, the same thing, so that we gave Mr. Swick and Mr. Palmorini equal respect, but I do want to appreciate him representing superintendent in that task.
Thank you, Mr. Palmorini. Mr. Rodriguez, let me just echo Mr. Palmorini, what he just said. Did an admirable job, you've had a lot on your plate. Mr. Rodriguez, your entire staff has had a lot on its plate. You've had a lot on your plate. John, you've had a lot on your plate. Ms. Fernandez, I don't know if she's in here, she's had a lot on her plate. It's been a trying six months, to say the least, but I thank you all and everybody in this room for how much hard work you've done, and it's not over yet. Sure, please.
You know, Ms. Gordon would always come back and say that, you know, we need to build our own in-house legal team. And, you know, for a long time, we were, we would get some pushback on it, but, you know, I think we have built a really strong in-house legal team that, you know, we're not having to have as many executive sessions. We know we're getting briefed when things are coming up. So I just, hats off to everyone. And the thing is, you know, Mr. Rodriguez comes to us and shows us, I'm still under budget. And, you know, compared to where we used to be, and the fact that we do have in-house counsel, we're still saving the taxpayers of Central Florida dollars. And I think that's important because we heard a lot that we're wasting taxpayer dollars. And, you know, we're fighting to maximum, maximize taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, good point. Mrs. Gordon?
Thank you. Thank you so much for that comment. I, I was just over here chuckling because I always give Mr. Rodriguez a, a very hard time, and, and he knows it because I'm always in, 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 in and out. But I, I always have to say, I want to just say hats off to the superintendent, because she found the money to keep expanding our legal department, so. So, you know, I had made up a name in the back a long time ago because this was just a dream for this board that we have our own. We had one in-house attorney and one outhouse. But as I, now the next thing would be, but I hope this doesn't happen. Yeah, I know. But I hope it doesn't happen with the superintendent and most of the, and a lot of Joey can tell you, and a lot of the school districts, they had their own legal counsel. But our counsel works for the board and the superintendent and try to make all of us look good. So I was just going to say Gordon, Rodriguez, Palmarene and Fernandez Legal Department. But I, I, I really want to thank you all. I'm, I'm, I'm too, like you, Mr. Chairman, and you all have worked extremely hard. And not only that, you've worked extremely hard, it is hard to keep eight members abreast of every little detail. Oh, and I left out Brooks, but Brooks just joined the firm. So he has to earn a seat. Okay, where did he go? Out the door? All right. Okay, he has to earn, he has to earn that. So y'all can pass that on. But, but the, but the fun part is that I don't know how you, when it happens, it happens so quickly. But you were able to, to give it to us and to keep us abreast. And I really want to say, and I think the chairman has to say, the last meeting we had, the four hour meeting and the five hour meeting, I don't know how to thank you all because we were not allowed to speak to our general counsel on one side. But Mr. Rodriguez, you were superb. I, we, I mean, you had given us information we needed, but that night when it all hit the floor, you were able, you were running like a little chicken. Good thing it's Easter time. And you, you, you were, you were running from one place to another because I couldn't stay and hear Daryl's conversation. I definitely couldn't stay and hear Nancy's. And then I looked at her and said, are you supposed to be standing here, Nancy? And she said, no, I'm just standing. I'm going to move back. But I thought it was so neat how you even tried to handle the secrecy of our standing there and you're respecting our rights, the right to know. And that evening was very, very helpful to us because I don't think people understand that most of the time we have an executive session or we have a meeting where we could get the information like tonight. We were able to be very well informed by our legal department on the cases that came before us tonight. But that night we were informed, but it all flipped around. So we really had to get our ducks in a row and you did an awesome job in directing your team to speak with one side and then you speaking with us. I was very grateful for that. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Committee reports. Ms. Cato, my notes are a scribbled mess. Did you have a, okay, I couldn't remember. I crossed out budget, but then I put a yes beside it. Ms. Moore, communications? Ms. Flynn, legislative?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The process that we go about formulating our legislative platform priorities or priorities and platforms starts basically, I think in May or right after the legislative session up in Tallahassee ends. And I wanted to bring that to your attention, that the same process will continue this year. Based on comments that I heard from board members during the impasse hearing, I think there might be some issues that we want to look at to put on our platform in regard to Florida's reform movement. So I'd like for all the board members to start thinking of any type of, of platform priority that we might want to add. Last year, remember, we made a resolution that talked about Florida's accountability process and that we felt that a third party really should come in and look at the validity of the program. And, you know, there's, there's issues about phasing in different aspects of some new accountability measures. So I think we really need to look at that part in our platform. So I just wanted to bring that to all the board members' attention. Take off local control. This was, we asked for local control and we got it. Now we have to look at textbooks. But I wanted all of us to, to start thinking about that because within the next month and a half or so, we'll start putting those ideas together. Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins.
No, I was trying to come in last, Chairman, with a couple of announcements.
Wanted to comment on what Ms. Flynn had to say. Mrs. Gordon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently I attended and, and all of us pretty much, we brought something back for Daryl and who else? Daryl and Christine. Recently I attended the National School Board Association. All of us attended, the chairman, Delly went with us. So Christine, but you, you were there, your spirit and Daryl's spirit. But I think we had full board representation, which was unusual. I did not plan to go because we were in preparation for FCAT. So I missed that one day of testing with FCAT because we were in, in New Orleans representing the board. It was their annual conference. And if you look in your package under 19.01, I've assembled several pieces of information. I did bring back, so if you run into your new president, Ann, Ann Burns, is that's the way you pronounce it, Joey? Ann Burns? Is that how Ann pronounces it? Is it Burns? Okay, Ann Burns was elected our new National School Board Association president. She hails from New York. She really has a lot to add. But one piece that I'm really going to ask, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask if you and I and the superintendent can get on number three, the premise for public advocacy, and I'm asking for Christine because she does the communication and she's heading up the piece, helping us, you know, formulate how the board is going to go about with the sale tax in our community meetings. We need to take this piece, the premise for public advocacy. It's a major piece in there where you take your advocacy to the next level. And the senior editor of communication, I would like to ask the superintendent if she could set up a conference call one, one afternoon for Ms. Moore because of communications. Mr. Sublet is chair, myself is vice chair, and you and a staff member superintendent so that we could see how we can enroll our district in, get connected in the public engagement advocacy piece, which is on page six of this. They're asking most of the school boards to come on board. We had an opportunity to hear the public advocacy piece. We also might want to look at some of our famous superstars that we have here. We have a lot of famous people in Orlando. We probably could get them to help us push for public education. I would like to see Ms., Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore come together with us, with National School Board Association and see how we can put it in as one of our community piece for the sale tax and also put it in for our, one of our pieces to be enrolled with the National School Board on public advocacy. So do you, do you understand what I'm asking here? So if we can get her to give us a conference call, we get in a conference call and if you would go through this packet that's in your board dock, and then we could bring it back to the other board members in a presentation, very short. It could be done in the back room, back there of where we could fit in with Christine's being the chairman of the communications committee. All right? I want us to be a part. I think we want to get connected. They are asking us all to get connected in the public engagement. And this has been a big thing with Ms. Flynn. So when we try to get what national is asking us to do, and most of you saw it at the national level, we want to do it on the local level. Okay? And then we want to intertwine it with our sale tax. All right? So, Mr. Chairman, if the superintendent could get that date set up with us, for us on a conference call, we would be very grateful for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gordon.
You're welcome.
All right, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of notes. Somehow it seems like a long time ago that we got our notification of being a broad finalist. It's hard to imagine we hadn't actually had a board meeting since then. I wanted to mention a couple of things that board members would note. May 21st on your calendars, if at all possible, that is the date that the team will be here and actually conduct a media day. And so they certainly would love for board members who are available to be onsite, don't know which school yet, but available on the 21st for their media day. I will tell you, they take it pretty seriously. They have their own videographer. They have their own journalist following the story and doing, conducting interviews and speaking with individuals. And then of course, they invite the local media to be a part as well that day. So make a note on your calendars for May 21st. The rest of the calendar, the schedules of the event are pretty tight. They dictate who they want to see and when they want to see them, which, which interviews they're going to conduct and which focus groups they will be speaking with quite thorough, I can assure you. But I can also tell you, when they set up those particular meetings, they do not invite any additional observers or visitors in the room when they talk with those various groups. And so there've been times, and they mentioned this to us because they don't want to feel bad about it, but there've been times in other districts where they have to ask visitors and guests to, to be removed from those meetings. So they're pretty strict, but the media day is our chance and they certainly would love to have all board members present on that day and, and anything else that you might come up in their random sampling, then you might be asked to participate in. But we're, we're very excited and the plans are going forward for that visit, May 20th through 23rd is when they'll be here. Secondly, I am very pleased to tell you that we were selected for a project being conducted by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. It is called Master Planning for Innovation Peer District Forum. In essence, I was contacted because of some of the work we're doing with our digital pilot schools and they were interested, curious as to whether or not we'd be willing to apply and to participate with only 10 districts selected nationwide to be a part of a forum to really talk about how you move forward in digital learning effectively for our children. We think we can learn a lot from our peers across the nation. Certainly we believe we have a lot to offer as well for what we've been doing here and they, and they were impressed with our application and so we will be a part of that effort as well. Thirdly, I did copy you on my correspondence to the Commissioner of Education regarding that teacher and the details that we provided both to our local media and to those who questioned anything regarding that teacher who was arrested in Polk County. You have in your emails, a copy of the correspondence I sent to the commissioner indicating Directive A9, Board Policy JLF, Management Directive A4, and our standard operating procedures in our employee relations department. While that individual no longer works for us, records do indicate that certain reports were made, but a report to professional practices was not made. And so we've provided all of that for the commissioner and copied you as well. Lastly, it is our understanding that Pearson acknowledged there was a glitch today, not just in Orange County, not just in the state, but across the nation. They had a few issues in some other states as well. We are reassured by the Department of Education that everything, and they have been reassured by their vendor, that everything will be back up and running again tomorrow. So FCAT testing shall resume. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's certainly been an eventful week, hasn't it, Dr. Jenkins? Okay. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. I'm sure I'm not the only board member who was receiving emails asking when the calendar for 2015 would be released. And we have a calendar. We voted on it today. So anybody listening to this, it was delayed because we were waiting for the dates of testing for next year from the DOE. So we've got a calendar. It's on our website. Thank you to Patty, Nasty and Tony for being patient with all of us.
Booked those flights, right, parents? In all honesty, the biggest complaint I had is people couldn't make travel plans because they didn't know what the calendar was. And that's a valid complaint.
Especially for Boy Scouts because they do a lot of.
That too.
Yeah. Do a lot of activities.
Yeah. Mrs. Robinson.
I just wanted to give you all an interesting piece of good news. The Edgewater High School Hall of Fame just had their event Saturday, a week and a half ago. And we, they inducted several really interesting people, the Director of the Secret Service in Washington. She gave my husband, who happens to be the president of the, I think, some cuff links, some Secret Service cuff links. I asked if he could get in special places with that. She said, give it a shot. Why not? Anyway, her name's Julia Pearson. And then another really interesting person that Bridgette and I actually went to high school with at Edgewater, Norm Lewis. He is the current Phantom of the Opera. He will be starting in May. And what's interesting about it is the Phantom of the Opera has only had 13 Phantoms on Broadway in New York. Two of them have been Edgewater High School graduates. Davis Gaines had the longest running Phantom. He was the longest running. I think he ran for 20 years. And now Norm is just starting in May. And he told us the other night, I said, you know, my board might be coming to receive this prize in September. He said he would get us all seats and backstage passes to meet everybody and come see him if we all come. So I just have to let him know we're coming. So anyway, I just wanted.
Not the over $50.
Well, tell me what the cheap seats. Anyway, I just wanted, I just wanted to tell you all that that's a, I think that's really interesting that two of the 13 Phantoms are Edgewater High School graduates. So, and congrats on the broad. That's awesome.
We'll just pay. We'll check. We'll pay.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Ms. Cato.
You know, it was interesting because you know how competitive I can be from time to time. And I was looking at Facebook a little earlier and, you know, St. John's County is always the number one county in the state with testing and whatever. Their Pearson testing was not working today either. So I was like, we weren't on Facebook saying it wasn't us, but it was, you know, some counties that usually don't have any hiccups at all and we weren't being reported. So I was like, yay, it wasn't just us. So that was nice to hear. And I got, I got one of those blasts from Tallahassee and it kind of backed up the question that we've been having about, is Florida truly ready to go to all computer assessments if we've had this glitch today? So, you know, I think it starts a whole new dialogue, even though we are changing vendors who's going to do the testing. I think it brings a whole new dialogue to it because if you guys will remember when Commissioner Smith came, however many commissioners ago that was, we had crashed the FAIR testing system when they first started that. And I asked him, I said, you know, we've already crashed it. We've told you, you can't do this. Can you prove to me that you guys have fixed it? And so I'm not quite sure that we've got it figured out yet. So I just think it's a new, interesting wrinkle in, you know, going to totally computer-based testing.
Thank you, everybody. And Dr. Jenkins, thank you for your report. All right. I've handed out the work session schedule. We have budget work sessions coming up. I will take comment at those. So come with your armor on because I think we're going to get a fair degree of comment at those. So just be prepared. And board members, just so you know, the reason I take comment at those in particular is because otherwise we're in the dilemma of saying that we don't take public comment and we don't take input. And I know there's a budget committee process, but oh, I think we need to take comment at those as well. Code of Student Conduct is coming up as well. So I know there are a lot of issues that board members want to talk about at that. Start to make a mental note of what those are. One that you do not see on here that we will have before we break for this, for, for the summer, before graduations are over, we need to have an executive session on the collective or collaborative bargaining agreement. So I think there are a whole bunch of issues that we need to discuss based upon what we've been through. So I would ask each and every member here to please start either, however you do it, make mental notes, make computer notes, make handwritten notes of things you want to talk about at that. Because it's my intention that we will not rush that executive session and I think it's going to be a lengthy one. It will be the only topic on that day for the executive session. But I just think we all believe, probably, I haven't had this discussion with any of you because of sunshine, but I think we probably all agree that there are a whole bunch of issues we want to talk about going forward, about how we handle our collaborative bargaining and how we try to hit what I call the reset button going forward. Along the same lines, start making notes if you operate this way of topics you want to address in the retreat in the fall. I know it probably seems like a long way away, but August is going to fly upon us pretty quickly or September because of the election this year. So start to be thinking about that. I've already been building a list as I do all year. So we already have quite a few issues we need to talk about that I issues we need to talk about that I'm aware of. It's going to be, they're always, in my book at least, media agendas when we get to the retreat. I think this year's going to be meatier than usual, and that we've got some, you know, heavy topics that we need to talk about at the retreat. Andy, thank you for this. We never say thank you. We've got the coolest cop in the world. He bakes for us, and you know, and these cookies have been yelling, "Bill, Bill, Bill", the whole meaning to me. And I saw that they were yelling, "Daryl, Daryl, Daryl," and she couldn't resist a moment ago. She nibbled. And I hate you for this, because I love these, and I'm trying so hard to eat well. I just made a resolution last week, and I can't resist your cookies, so thank you for that. I also want to thank our West Orange supporters for being here. They come and sit through the entire meeting. Thank you for carrying the water for us out there. It doesn't go unrecognized. There's a word in the dictionary for that. It's masochism. I don't know why you put yourself through this, but thank you. The rest of us have to be here, but you're here willingly, so thank you for monitoring this process. And I also want to say, thank you, Alex. I don't know how many of you all know Alex Rodriguez-Hoyer in the back of the room. He's very active with the CTA. I don't know if you've noticed, though, that Alex sits through every one of our meetings, usually with his running mate Lily. Lily, excuse me. I don't know where Lily is tonight, but thank you, Alex, for holding down the fort and monitoring on behalf of CTA and on your own behalf as well. He's one of our classroom teachers, so I appreciate you being here each and every meeting, Alex. Mrs. Robinson.
I had a question about the work session schedule. I noticed on my calendar that I have several holds for work sessions that aren't on the calendar. Does that mean, do we still hold them? Just keep them held, even the one that's like next week? There's two on next week? I mean, wouldn't you think we'd already know what those were about?
Well, you can release that one, that hold, because we're not going to do a work session next week.
Well, yeah, there's, let me see.
There's like about four of them coming up that says, "Hold for legal issues."
April 29th and May 1st.
One of those we're going to need for the executive session, for sure.
Okay, that says, "Hold for legal issues." So if y'all could figure that out and then delete those if they're not needed, because I think we're all, I am running into, I have events happening at my schools. It's that time of year. And I want to know if I'm able to go to them, so thank you.
Ms. Cato.
Yes. Are we going to policy issues?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we don't lose, coming back to discuss the issue, and maybe you said the time was ripe when CEA comes that's going to put more children into West Orange High School. But my guess is that there's one that's been sitting out there just waiting for the vote today. So I think we all need to be prepared to understand exactly what we're looking at, but I don't want it to get lost, that it is a very serious discussion that we need to have.
Well, and you know, Ms. Cato, and I'm so glad you brought it up, because board members, I want you to know, as with any item that you want on the agenda, that Canopy Oak CEA will be on the agenda next board meeting. So, you know, at that time, you know, we need to figure out where, come prepared to have your discussion at the board meeting, because I'm putting it on the agenda. I made a commitment that once we got through the mediation process, that I would re-adjend it, so I'm putting it back on the agenda. Ms. Moore.
It was a 5-3 vote, Mr. Chair, and you were not on the prevailing side typically. To revisit or pull something off requires somebody from the prevailing side, so someone else would have to agree to do that.
Well, it was a motion to table, but that's just for that meeting, and I'll look to Mr. Rodriguez. But any board member, and this is an important point this board needs to make clear, you understand, any one of you all that wants an issue on the agenda for a board meeting can put an issue on the agenda.
Well, then again...
Mr. Rodriguez, is there any parliamentary impediment to me putting the Canopy Oak CEA back on the agenda? It was not a motion to table indefinitely.
I think it was just to postpone indefinitely at that time, so my understanding, the way your board is operated, though, I think it's the chairman's prerogative to put the agenda together. The question is, if it was postponed indefinitely, the maker of that motion didn't specify when it would come back. So let me research that issue and go back and read the minutes again before I give the body an informal answer.
I actually think I said when we had a solution, and based on today's vote of the county commission from where I'm sitting, we don't have a solution.
So let me review the record to be fair to the body. So I don't have the minutes.
We'll get an answer to the parliamentary issue, but again, I want to be upfront with you all. Whether it's on an agenda or not, there will be a motion, if necessary, from the chair to put it on the agenda. So we're going to have to have the discussion at the next board meeting. I'm not, I made a personal commitment that we would readdress the issue when we got through the mediation, and we're going to do that in a public forum, and a public forum is a board meeting. So that's not meant to be a power play, but that's why we have board meetings, is to talk about issues and hope that doesn't make anybody uncomfortable. But one way or the other, I'm going to raise the issue to whatever parliamentary means at the next meeting, so, and hopefully get a vote on whether we want to pass it, because I think Ms. Cato's right. We've got to make a decision on that. It's not just that one. We're starting to now get backed up a whole litany of CEAs, concurrency, and I don't want to have the debate now, but I think we need to make a decision as a policy matter, how we're going to treat all those. It's not just Canopy Oaks any longer. They're backing up. Ms. Moore.
All right, so let me understand what you're suggesting then, because I know Mrs. Cato, under Policy Issues, asked to have a session to discuss this in depth, and then you're asking for a vote the next meeting. So are you suggesting that we'll just have that all at one time and start with it as a policy decision? Because then it would certainly make sense, and I would be happy to, after we've had that discussion, as being on the prevailing side, to reconsider after that discussion. So I'm asking if that's what you're proposing.
I'm not sure if I understand the question. My understanding, and we'll, Mr. Rodriguez and I will huddle and clarify it, two things I understand, and I may be mistaken on both of them. Okay, number one, under Robert's Rules of Order, when something is postponed, I don't have to be on the prevailing side to bring it back. Number two, because otherwise, anything postponed would be postponed forever, and you would be suggesting the board member couldn't agenda item, and I don't think that's Robert's Rules of Order. Number two, statutorily, and this isn't my opinion, this is state statute, the chairman of the school board sets the agenda, and that's in the FSBA manual. There's a state statute right on point. Number three, it's always been, as I understand, and if I'm wrong, correct me, the custom of this board to agenda any item that a board member wants agendted. We don't have a requirement that somebody has to move to put something on the agenda. And in the four years I've been on the board, whenever anybody's wanted anything agendted. So all I'm suggesting is, and not in a bad way, I'm not willing to delay until we can find a work session time to deal with it. I think we need to have the discussion on how we're going to deal with CEAs and capacity enhancement agreements and concurrency agreements, excuse me. I think there's no better place to have that discussion than at the board table. And if there are board members who want to continue to table all CEAs and concurrency agreements that affect West Orange High School, I respect that, but, you know, we can vote accordingly to do that at the next board meeting. So that's all I'm suggesting, is we're going to, I just wanted to give the members a heads up because of Ms. Cato's reminder that that's going to be an issue for discussion next meeting. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I think, though, it's important that we have the complete discussion. If we're going to discuss it at the next meeting, then I would request then, that her request would be honored at the same time, because they certainly relate to one another, and I think we should vote with full information at our fingertips.
I'd be happy to. What was her request? I think she said we needed to have a discussion about what we're going to do with regard to CEAs and concurrency in West Orange. Did I miss something, Ms. Cato? Was there more to your request?
No. The other thing is, and it's very disheartening to me, is that our process is very different than county government. And when it's quoted that it was on a second reading when it was pulled, we don't have first readings and second readings in this governmental body. We get it as an informational item, and it's there strictly for information for us to ask more questions about, and then it moves to the agenda the next time. So in this whole, in this whole process, I think there needs to be a brief, and I'll put in capital letters, B-R-I-E-F, brief, PowerPoint of exactly what is the process here, and even just kind of refer to whatever statutes it is, together with the Orange County Charter Amendment Number, whatever it is, that says, "You can't build when there's no seats in a school." So I think we all need to start at one base, because our process is very different than county government's process. And it is my understanding that the Government Relations Department have been having meetings with the development community, talking about mitigation, how we figure out pupil generation, the whole process of how we do things, because there have been comments that, how do they come up with these numbers? Are they really using the same formula every time? And it's my understanding that those informational sessions have been well-received and that people are beginning to understand the process. And, you know, what's frustrating is, Orange County Public Schools does not build one house. We don't own any houses, and we're not dropping children into neighborhoods. A lot of times, we are responding to the fact that people have chosen to live in neighborhoods, and we need to have schools. And so I think, you know, I think because our meetings are available for people to watch, that we need to have our own little PowerPoint of this is how it happens. And I'm not talking about a 20-minute PowerPoint. You know, I'm talking five minutes, seven minutes max, of these are the drop-dead things you need to know about how the process works here, because I don't think we can have a fair conversation without everybody knowing where we're starting from.
I agree. So we'll tee it up for an overview and a presentation as well, and, you know, just give everybody a heads up, because in the vein of transparency, you know, one of the things you're going to hear from me next week is, is from my perspective, we cherry-picked one development, and I'm sympathetic, because for three years, I voted against various CEAs where there were not schools in the tenure plan or any relief coming online. I know I'm probably stating the obvious to this board, but we approved, I reviewed it this afternoon, so don't quote me on this entirely. I think we approved two of the five today that were adding students to already-over-capacity schools, where there's no relief planned in the tenure plan and nothing coming online. So, you know, one thing, one issue I think we're going to have to struggle with in two weeks is, you know, are we going to apply a, what I would suggest is a new policy county-wide, which frankly, I talked about for two years, and you all know that? Or are we going to just apply a policy in one area of the county? And that's, but all that being said, I want us to have the big policy discussion. We'll take as long as we want next week, but at the same time, I do think we need to give a definitive answer. And if the vote, if the will of the board, whether it's a seven-to-one vote, a five-to-two vote, or whatever, you know, whatever the vote, if the will of the board is to hold up that particular project and continue that, hold on it, so be it. But I think just in a sense of fairness, we owe it to that individual to give them an answer and to let them know that. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Without looking at each one that we approved today, I don't want anyone listening to this to think that all that come before us are alike, because some have different qualifiers on them that allow us to approve them, whether they're mitigation, or when they came in, or if they're vested. I do agree with you. We do need to look at that, but I don't want it to, anybody to hear this, say, "Well, those that came before us were the same as what came before us before," because without going through each one, there could be differences, probably are differences. Because I know when they come before me for District Two, I'm asking about that five-year window. I'm asking about the mitigation. I'm asking about why I should or why I shouldn't approve them. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Moore, bring us in for a landing.
Sure. I like hearing this conversation. I think you're right that if we're going to consider a policy, it should be certainly applied countywide, and it should go through that complete process so that, you know, we can make sure we're doing apples-to-apples, and we can look at a district-wide solution that honors the spirit of the Martinez Doctrine, that was certainly adopted by the citizens of this county overwhelmingly twice. So again, I really think it's absolutely premature to vote on anything until we have that process, and because it should be inclusive, it should be comprehensive, and then at that point, I think it'll be more clear to all of us how to handle that one situation out in West Orange. So I thank you for the discussion.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.